Well, good evening. Today is May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. You are either in the county commission meeting on purpose, or you've wandered into the wrong room. But we, we hope that you're here on purpose. We're grateful to have you here. It's our honor to have you here tonight. We hope that you find your time this evening profitable. We begin our meetings, as always, with a couple of things. It's our tradition. And we're going to have a pledge of allegiance. And we'll also have our sheriff chaplain, Chaplain Taylor, if you'll come forward. He's going to provide what's called, we always let you know what this is. This is called a solemnizing prayer. Solemnizing prayer means it's for us. It's not for you. It's for the commissioners. Certainly, as we make decisions for the community and the county, we seek wisdom in those instances and try to make sure we're making decisions that are in the best interest of everyone in the community. And here we are in budget time. And so now is a good time to be praying for wisdom. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started. And chaplain, if you'll lead us.
Commissioners, thanks for the privilege tonight to pray for you. Let's pray. Lord, we come to you tonight and thank you as we gather tonight, Lord. We thank for our county commissioners, your Lord. We thank you for the time they put in to have us be prepared for this meeting tonight. We thank for the work they do, Lord, the love they have for Rowan County, your Lord. For you can direct them by your spirit tonight, Lord Jesus. Give them the wisdom and knowledge they need. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, as always. We appreciate you, brother. You're excused. Yes, sir.
You want us to take up collection for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I've got some additions to make. And item two, which are, I'm sorry, there'd be item three, special recognition. We're going to add establishing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. We'll add that as item three C. Item three C. Also, we have an item that's been added for a scrap tire disposal, disposal account fund grant application. We'll add that to consent agenda, item Y. Item Y. And then we also have an EMS revised budget amendment. We'll add to consent as item Z, Zebra. Any other additions or deletions we need to know about? All right. We have a motion to make those changes.
So move.
All right, in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And then do we have a motion to consider approval of the consent agenda as amended? Motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. And then, also, I did want to say before we get rolling, I wanted to recognize Mayor Jonathan Williams, Mayor of Spencer, for being here with us. Honored to have you here. Good to have you here, Mr. Mayor. Anything you want to say? No? No? Okay, well then, yeah. Well then, thank you. Good, thank you for being here. All right. We'll move on to public comment. I have two signed up for public comment. First one is May Mack. May, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thanks for having me. Hi, Commissioners and everyone listening in Rowan County. My name is Megan Mack, and I'm here to advocate, sorry, y'all, I'm struggling with this. Okay. Advocate for you all to address the needs of the youth in the community to create a youth action agency in Rowan County using the Communities That Care model. Asking to please fund a full-time coordinator position that will be responsible for putting this universal prevention coalition-based model into practice locally to prevent youth violence, drug use, delinquency, anxiety and depression, and early pregnancy. It is evident our youth are struggling. And just this week, we were painfully reminded of this fact. This model is shown to reduce youth violence by twenty-five percent, to reduce youth drug use by over thirty percent, and has a six-dollar return on investment for every dollar that goes into its functioning. Those are the numbers, and I know that those are important. But I want to share with you what your constituents, people in the community, said it would mean if there was a program like this here in Rowan County. When your community was asked why they wanted a youth action agency that is able to coordinate the services that are available for our youth here in Rowan County, they said that it was because it would be a community where everyone was working together towards a common good, that youth would work together to grow and to thrive, that students would be employed in community leadership roles, that youth would become positive role models with strong community ties, and that it would allow children from different communities to bond over shared interests. Our community currently has many different services for our youth. What we hear is that sometimes there is a disconnect between the services and those that need them most. What this program would allow is to increase the effectiveness of what we already hear to coordinate already established programs. I thank you for your attention. And again, we are here to advocate for this board to invest in our youth by creating a youth action agency using the Communities That Care model. This is a valuable solution to problems that we hear in the community and the problems that we see that result from our youth being overlooked and not invested in.
Thank you, Ms. Mack. Next, we have Brandy Berg. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
How are you doing today?
Well.
So thanks for having me. Hello, Commissioners and everyone listening in Rowan County. My name is Brandy Gardner Berg, and I am here as well to plead for you to address the needs of the youth in our community and create a youth action agency in Rowan County. We have spoken with community leadership. We have found a lot of people see the value in something like this being implemented as far as people that are on staff in Rowan County already. We would like to see y'all fund a full-time coordinator position that does the Communities That Care model and so would be responsible for creating a universal prevention coalition-based model in practice here in Rowan County. This way, we can reduce the youth violence, drug use, delinquency, anxiety and depression, and even early pregnancy. It is evident our youth are struggling, and just this week, we were painfully reminded of this fact. This model, like May said, will, is shown to reduce violence by twenty-five percent, to reduce youth drug use by over thirty percent, and has a six-dollar return on investment for every dollar that goes into its function. Now, those are just the numbers, and I know they are important to y'all. But at the end of the day, what is most important to me is these children. Like I said the first time I spoke, my family's been in this county, I know, since at least eighteen ninety because I have a postcard to my great-great-grandmother that's dated in Cleveland for eighteen ninety. I'm pretty sure I'm going to die here, and I'm pretty sure I'm going to have grandbabies here. I'd like for it to be even better for them than it's been for me because I've watched things get better and things get worse. And we always have to just try again when things get worse. And everything I've seen with the Communities That Care, the way it works together is it's, it's like this tree, and it creates this root system that will bring the children more connection with their community so they'll have more respect for their community, be more willing to volunteer and do things to better their community too. So it won't be that they are just doing less bad things. They will also be doing more good things. I want to say thank you for your attention again. And like I said, I'm just here to advocate for this youth coalition group to be created. And I thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Berg, thank you for being here. All right, we're going to move on to special recognitions. And commissioners, if you'll join me out front, we've got a lot to do tonight. I think we have some EMS representatives here. Would you guys all come up and join us? We'd love to have you up here with us. Someone's watching the store while you're gone, right? Yeah, go, some of you come over here. Chief? It's good to have you guys here tonight. Want to turn the microphone over to Commissioner Lancaster.
Well, first, welcome everybody here. And we definitely, definitely appreciate all the work you guys do. I've worked with most of you guys standing up here. We've been in some interesting situations. We really appreciate what you guys do. And I, I get the honor of reading the proclamation from you guys for this week. So whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown, have grown to fill the gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicines, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of, of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Service Week. Now, therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the EMS Strong theme, this is EMS, caring for our community. It encourages the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. We appreciate it and thank you, guys. That's a motion. Do I have a second? Aye.
There's things that I've realized in life I'm not good at, things I couldn't do. I could give you a list. Actually, my wife would give you a really long list of things I'm not good at. But what, yeah, yeah. You, you guys have this task along with a, a host of others in our community that's so vital. And the older we get, and I'll just leave it at that, right, Jim? The older we get, the more we know we're going to need your services eventually. We really appreciate you guys. We pull up on accidents, and you're there. We pull up at fires, and you're there. And what you do for our community is, is take care of us. And we recognize that. We know that. We hold you in highest regard, and we appreciate what you do for us. Chief, anything you'd like to?
Chairman, we appreciate the proclamation, the for giving it out to us and everything. We just try to do the best we can for the citizens in the county that we serve. Have McKinsey Collin, Abby Frye, Division Chief Ryan Edwards, State Chief Aaron Thurston, and Deputy Chief TJ Brown. And Bradley is right over here beside the manager. He's our chief of training. We appreciate the proclamation.
You know, as Chief was saying, we take for granted that we have help all the time. We know that these guys work twenty-four hours a day. And I remember, yes, years ago, Mr. Chairman, when I was a young fella in coaching gray wild football, I had a kid who was involved in a real hard tackle, and he was laying back. And he, and he was the kind of kid that never got hurt. And he said, "My back, my back hurts." We called, obviously, we called nine-one-one. And I waited and waited. And I got somebody's cell phone. I called back in, and I said, "Got to have somebody up here. This kid's hurting." And they said, "Mr. Green, you called in three minutes ago, and we have somebody that's going to be there just any minute." So when you really need these folks, they can't be fast enough. And we can't get them there as quickly as we think we need them because we know we're not capable of a lot of situations than they are. And we just appreciate so much what you do in our community and what you've done for years. Thank you.
I won't get too specific, but Chief remembers a few years back, I won't even say where I was. I just want to leave it as unspecific as possible. But I, I heard a head-on collision where I was. And we called nine-one-one really quickly. And I was, put on some shoes and ran through the woods. And I'm telling you, it was three minutes. And these folks had pulled up, and there were three fatalities. This is stuff that I'm not well-suited for. Anyone else like that? I don't know if it's a character flaw or, or what, but these guys just rushed, rushed, rushed right to the scene. And I tell you, I got choked up just looking at them. And I said to him, "I don't know how you guys do this." So anytime I think about you guys, I, I know that's not the majority of what happens. But that was a moment I'll never forget and how you guys were just there in a matter of, almost as quickly as I could to the scene. So we appreciate y'all and continue to pray for you guys for wisdom like we ask for, how you handle things. And thank you for your bravery and your service. So would you all please give them a round of applause?
We also have the pleasure tonight to establish a proclamation that establishes May as Mental Health Awareness Month. And we have been working so closely with the Health Department ever since we were fortunate enough to be elected to this because the Health Department is just absolutely so important to us and the other citizens of Rowan County. Because nobody comes to us unless they really need some help. But whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and all people experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our community affecting people of every age, race, gender, and socioeconomic status, with one in five adults and one in six youth experience a mental health disorder each year. And whereas stigma surrounding mental health discourages individuals from speaking, seeking the help they need, and raising public awareness is vital to removing barriers and encouraging open and honest conversations about mental health. And whereas mental health recovery is possible through prevention, early intervention, access to effective treatment, and community support services. And whereas Rowan, Rowan County recognizes the importance of promoting mental health and wellness through county-wide efforts that include education, advocacy, and accessible care. And whereas local organizations, healthcare providers, schools, faith, communities, businesses, and individuals play a critical role in fostering mental wellness and supporting those living with mental health condition. And whereas during the month of May, national and local observances unite individuals and organizations to raise awareness, to fight stigma, and to advocate for better mental health resources and policy. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May the twenty-fifth as Mental Health Awareness Month in Rowan County and encourages all residents to recommit to improving mental wellness in our communities by supporting one another, increasing awareness, and promoting access to care for all this nineteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-five. And I make this in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have anyone from Health Department here tonight? All right, we'll make sure to, to get this over to them. So thank you, Commissioner. Well, last year this time, I think we began this, and I wasn't able to be here last year. So it's exciting to be here this year, this time. It is our distinct honor to announce here in Rowan County the Governor's Volunteer Service Awards. And so nominations are sent into the governor's office, and then the governor's office chooses these volunteer service awards and lets us know. And so we are here to honor these recipients tonight, one at a time. And first, we're going to bring up Catherine Russo. Catherine, if you'll come forward. Should, should I have you ride your motorcycle up here? Come on up here. Let me read to you a little bit about Ms. Catherine. She was nominated by Cynthia Hodges of Look Twice North Carolina. North Carolina has been teaching teen drivers how to share the road, later named Look Twice North Carolina, with vulnerable road users since the early nineteen nineties. Bikers believe that if they shared their stories and their knowledge with new drivers, teaching them to look for the smallest vehicles, it would make a difference in their driving habits. Turns out, they were correct. Ms. Cat is the reason we offer over ten free programs. She created every one of them. And as Director of Safety Awareness and Education for the North Carolina Concerned Bikers Association, she's also responsible for promoting the program, getting and training new teachers. She also built and maintains their website and all social media. But it isn't just what Ms. Cat does. It's how she does it. It's who she is. She can't help but be an inspiration to everyone who meets her. In two thousand and twenty-four, she was honored with the Educator of the Year Award by the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program. We believe Ms. Cat, as she is affectionately known to our students, is an inspiration to many to always look out for others and to make a difference. So we have a certificate for you, signed by the Governor of North Carolina. And this reads, "The Governor's Award for Volunteer Service." This certifies that Catherine Russo is hereby awarded the highest designation of appreciation for distinguished volunteer service to the people and the state of North Carolina. And it's to be granted and extended to all honors and courtesies provided by this office, entitled thereto by this certificate of recognition and appreciation. So we, as county commissioners here in Rowan County, would, with great pride, present this to you tonight. And thank you for your spectacular service to not only our community, but to the state of North Carolina. Congratulations. Oh, wait, there's more. There's this pin from the governor's office. And also, we'd like to present to you this coin, the seal of Rowan County. We have a larger version of it here on the floor. So we'd like to present this to you also on behalf of the county commissioners. So congratulations to you. That's a good point. Sheriff, remember her name. Y'all give her some grace, all right? Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Our next award recipient, I've known for a long, long time, Ms. Carolyn Barker. Carolyn, would you come forward? Carolyn is our next winner and was nominated by Miriam Ramirez of Capstone Recovery. Carolyn retired in two thousand and two, but since then, she has volunteered with many organizations, both in and out of our county. She's volunteered as a life coach at Rowan Helping Ministries to those guests who ask for help, and additionally, served six years on their Board of Directors. She's a member of their Program Services Committee and assists with lunch monthly. Carolyn delivered for Meals on Wheels for years. She's volunteered at Capstone Recovery since two thousand and thirteen as a member of their Board of Directors. She's presently on the Honorary Committee and teaches life classes to the women who are helped there. She also offers pro bono counseling and has done so since two thousand and two. Carolyn is a Sunday school teacher. A member of a retiring singing group that sings at nursing homes for free and volunteers one day a month at the Billy Graham Library. Carolyn has dedicated a lot of years to helping others without ever expecting anything in return. So Ms. Carolyn, I'd like to present you also with a certificate from the Governor of North Carolina that reads, "Governor's Award for Volunteer Service." This is to certify that Carolyn Barker is hereby awarded the highest designation of appreciation for distinguished volunteer service to the people and the state of North Carolina, and is to be granted and extended to all honors and courtesies provided by this office, entitled thereto by this certificate of recognition and appreciation. And so we present this to you on behalf of the governor and on behalf of a grateful state and a grateful county for your service. We appreciate you. Thank you, Carolyn. And we have, we, we also have a get out of a speeding ticket pin for you. I've got a whole stash of these, boys. I carry them in my car. And also, a seal coin. And also a seal coin for Rowan County. I should have asked Ms. Russo, but do you have some family here that you want to introduce? You've got some folks from out of state, don't you?
I have my son here from Mississippi. And then I'm blessed to have an extended family, and all of them are here.
Would her extended family stand? I said, "Are you related to the mayor?" And she says, "No, I just kept his children." Well, that's pretty good related, if you ask me. Oh, is that right? Well, it's good to see you all. And Ms. Russo, we'll also have you and have your guest stand here in a second, okay? But Carolyn, thank you. God bless you, okay? Thank you. Thank you, family, for being here. Another round of applause for Carolyn. Ms. Russo, would you like to stand again and have your guest stand with you? Oh, well, welcome. All right, our next honoree is Tessa Montgomery. Tessa, would you come forward? I'm sorry. I don't have my glasses on. Oh, wait, yeah, I do. I'm so sorry. Teresa Montgomery, how are you? Welcome.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's true, I did. We're glad you're with us here today. So let me tell you a little bit about our newest friend, Teresa. She was nominated by Rowan Helping Ministries, who says that Teresa's story is an example of resilience, service, and giving back. While completing her social work degree at Livingston College, she chose Rowan Helping Ministries as her field of work since she once had been a guest. Upon her return, she became a vital part of our community, giving motivational talks to the guests and volunteering in nearly every aspect of the work. Whether at the front desk, in the laundry room, in our food pantry, assisting the Crisis Network Assistance Office, or helping in the annual point-in-time count, Teresa gives tirelessly, always with a smile on her face. Her lived experience of homelessness and crisis allows her to connect with those she serves in a way few can. We are deeply grateful for her dedication, wisdom, and heart. She embodies the spirit of service, and it is an honor to nominate her for this award. So Ms. Teresa, we would like to present to you, on behalf of the Governor of North Carolina, this Governor's Award for Volunteer Service, certifying that Teresa Montgomery is hereby awarded the highest designation of appreciation for distinguished volunteer service to the people and the state of North Carolina in Rowan County, and is granted and extended all honors and courtesies provided by this office, entitled thereto by this certificate of recognition and appreciation, signed by the Governor of the state of North Carolina and presented to you here today. Thank you. Congratulations. Anything you'd like to say?
When I was at Rowan Helping Ministry and received my award then, there were two things that I failed to mention. And one was, Rowan Helping Ministry is a Christian-based, and I know that I was led there by God. That was the beginning of my journey into independence. And I felt like, in my heart, being able to share what I experienced through the years would help the residents that are there at Rowan Helping Ministry, because being that I lived there for six months, I could understand some of their, you know, their misfortunes or how they may feel depressed about not being there. But I was there to, I'm there to encourage them. Nine years ago, I was homeless, and next month, I am buying a home. Praises to God. During that time of my homelessness, I had, well, I did enroll in school, but it took me seven years to get my bachelor's in social work. I had lung cancer, I broke my leg in four places, and my mom had passed away a year before I graduated. But perseverance, the race isn't given to the swift, but those who can endure. And so I'm thankful for God allowing me to endure. 9/11 reminds you of the, what happened in New York. But Ecclesiastes 9:11 is what talks about the race is not given to the swift. I have one more thing I want to share.
Want me to hold that?
Wednesday could be here today. But she is a volunteer. She is my emotional support pet. And Kena allowed her to come into the office with my certifications, of course. So she has been my present company, which allowed me to do the hours that I do at the shelter, because we are both dependent on each other. But she had a message she wanted to give to Kena.
Anything else you want to say? Well, that dog writes pretty well. Good.
Kena Grubb, I regret I could not be here, but wish to thank you, the Executive Director for Rowan Helping Ministry. I am happy that you recognize and appreciate my mom's efforts to help others. The staff at Crisis Center have been kind, friendly, but lacked dog treats. The accommodations while volunteering has enabled my mother and I to unite in service of others.
No, Ms. Teresa, on a serious note, some of us are drawing close to the end of our service, you know, with the county. And I think one of the things that I will cherish the most about being a county commissioner is meeting people from all walks of life that are here to talk to us about different things, a lot of it economic development-related. But what I've noticed over our almost 11 years is those folks that have the most compelling stories and who are beneficiaries of great success, all came from tremendous struggle. Every single one of them came from struggle and turned it into success and service to others. And you're a great example of that. And if I asked you, would you change anything? My guess is you'd probably say, "Well, God bless you, and we're really proud of you. We'd like to give you another free speeding pass," and also a coin from Rowan County, and say, "God bless you, and thank you." Jim has his own purse. Before he does it, Teresa, I'll let you know, you'll probably need homeowner's insurance, so feel free to see me afterwards. Shameless, shameless plug. Thought I'd get to it before the independent agent did, right? Okay. All right. Before I go, Ms. Teresa, do you want to invite your guest to stand? Yeah, y'all go ahead and stand, and let's give them a round of applause for supporting them. I certainly, last but certainly not least, Mr. Matthew Weaver, if you'd come forward, I don't have a keyboard for you here. You can play while I'm reading this. Matthew Weaver was also nominated by Rowan Helping Ministries. He is not only a talented musician, has anyone, has everyone heard this guy play piano? Raise your hand if you've heard, raise your hand if you haven't. Oh, my goodness. What? You know, no, you want to. This guy is one of the most talented pianists I've ever heard. I have the honor of, we go to church together, and when he's not touring, we get to hear him on occasion. So what a talent he is. But he's not only a talented musician and dedicated volunteer, he's been sharing his time and talents with Rowan Helping Ministries since 2001. Most often, you will find Matthew in the kitchen serving meals, but he has done whatever was needed, washing laundry for the guests, stocking holiday, I thought that said stuffing holiday turkey, cleaning restrooms, and tackling countless behind-the-scenes tasks that so many overlook. For Matthew, no job is too small when it comes to serving others. This past Christmas Eve, he serenaded our guests with festive holiday tunes on a banjo? You, what are all, what all instruments do you play? Good heavens. Making the season a little brighter for those facing hard times. What sets Matthew apart is not only his talent, but his giving heart. His kindness, dedication, and service make him truly deserving of this reward. And if you all know Matthew, you know that to be true. So Matthew, we would like to present you, on behalf of a grateful state and county, this Governor's Award, provided by the Governor of the great state of North Carolina, certifying that Matthew Weaver is hereby awarded the highest designation of appreciation for distinguished volunteer service to the people and the state of North Carolina, and is to be granted and extended all honors and courtesies provided by this office, entitled thereto by this certificate of recognition and appreciation. So on behalf of the Rowan County Board of Commissioners and the good people of Rowan County, we present this to you on behalf of the Governor, and we say thank you very
I would just like to say, if you don't, if you've never experienced volunteering, you don't know what you're missing, folks. And the lady that shared her life story, that's the reason why I volunteered. God bless you, and God bless Kena and the staff, Vicky, and, oh gosh, I'm sorry, your name just came. Samantha, thank you. But actually, my time goes back a little bit earlier with Rowan Helping Ministries, when we were getting food from our local food line delis and bringing them in. They were staying at the churches, I believe, when it started out at First Presbyterian. So it's been a wonderful organization, and I'm so proud to be a part of this. And I would like to recognize, my mom and dad are here tonight. They just celebrated 62 years of marriage, and mom's cancer-free after five years. So if you would stand up, mom and dad, if you would just stand up. And Linda and Brenda's alongside them, they're with Capstone Recovery and Lifeway, is it Lifeway Church or Crossway? Crosslife Church. They volunteer faithfully every month, so we appreciate them and all they do, they've been wonderful support. Thank you so much for this wonderful honor, so many people I know here this evening. God bless you, and find an organization to volunteer, you'll never be sorry, because it's the best thing that you can ever do. Be the reason somebody smiles today. That's my favorite quote by Dr. David Jeremiah. Thank you.
Well, and we'd like to present another pin from the sheriff for you to use.
Sheriff, I'm 52, and I've never had a speeding ticket yet.
Why did you say that? There's still time, he says. And then also a seal and pin, or a coin from Rowan County. So congratulations, Matthew. Yes, sir. All right, how about another round of applause for our four winners? Yes, I'm sorry. Let's bring all of the award winners up, and we'll get a group photo with all four Now, it wasn't that fun. It's so great to be around so many good people. We're just blessed to have wonderful folks in our community.
Make a motion, will you, adjourn?
Yeah, man, we got stuff to do now. Mr. Shelton, I think, so our next item on our agenda is public hearing and executive summary presentation for Project Pixie. Welcome, Scott.
And thank you, Commissioners, for hearing this request from the EDC and from the client for Project Pixie. This is an existing employer in Rowan County. It's an internationally-known company, it's been around for decades, and they are currently evaluating sites in the Charlotte region for a new facility. And there's a greenfield site in Rowan County that's among the candidates for this expansion. If this greenfield site were chosen, the company would operate two separate facilities. These would not be on the same campus. But they plan to create 30 jobs over the next two years, and they would invest about $28 million in new construction and equipment for the project. And the plan is for them to be operational at the beginning of 2027. And I know the Commissioners will likely want to ask this, so I'll go ahead and tell you that we were told the average pay for these new jobs is just under $56,000 a year. And so, under these terms, the company is eligible for a Level 1 incentive grant, part of the county's adopted incentive policy. Of course, this is equal to 40% of the new taxes they would pay over a five-year span. Again, that is what they're asking for tonight. So I provided some numbers in your packet, and those were based on the following assumptions, and that is the tax rate staying at 58 cents, $23 million of real property investment, $5 million of personal property investment, and the project being complete by 2026. We also tried to factor in equipment depreciation in this forecast, and that was used, we used the 2025 Depreciation Schedule A for that, and assumed 10-year lifespan for all business personal property. With that said, during those five incentivized years, With that said, during those five incentivized years, uh, the county would collect about $786,000 of revenue. The total value of the incentive grant over five years would be about $314,000. That would net the county about $472,000 in the first five years. If you factor in a 10-year span, that's about 1.5 million of revenue for the county, minus that $314,000 grant, that leaves a net to the county of about $1.2 million. And also, this project will be located in the city of Salisbury. Excuse me, so tomorrow night, the Salisbury City Council had its own public hearing to consider its own Level One Grant for the project. So what we're asking for tonight after the public hearing respectfully is that the Board of Commissioners, uh, approve the following motion to approve a Level One Grant for Project Pixie under the terms of the county's adopted incentive grant policy. And just to summarize in closing, it'd be about $28 million of new investment in Rowan County, about 30 new jobs over the next two years, and about 1.2 million of new revenue for the county over that 10-year span. And of course, an opportunity, opportunity to support an existing Rowan County employer. And thank you for considering this request, and happy to answer any questions.
Uh, will you go back to the motion and just leave it up so we'll know? All right, thank you. All right, any questions for Scott?
Scott, do you know about, uh, any requirements that are on the, uh, future employees? Any degrees that are required, or any background such as welding or?
No real advanced training for these jobs, this is in the logistics field. So they're going to need, you know, forklift, uh, operators, material handlers and things like that. So, uh, uh, no real, uh, heavy training involved with that.
So almost anybody would be available to take one of these jobs?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The county is, I'm sorry, the company has said to us multiple times, they believe from promoting within, it was a good place to start for anybody just getting into the workforce or trying to re- uh, reposition in some kind of type of line of work. So, uh, yeah, no advanced training involved.
Good. All right, Scott. Don't go too far. All right, we will open the floor for a public hearing, and we do that because, um, this incentive policy that we have, we still need to come before the general public and allow them to ask questions, uh, that they may have regarding this specific, uh, incentive request. So if anyone has anything they'd like to talk about or offer up during this time, this would be the time to do it. On once, twice. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve a Level One Grant to Project Pixie for the terms stated in the county's adopted incentive grant program policy?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a motion that we adopt these as presented.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Scott, thank you. Appreciate it. Aaron, Planning Department, welcome. Good to see you. This is, uh, Consider Permit to Exceed PE 01-25. Glad you're here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, we have a permit to exceed 0125, uh, from Francisco Castro. This is at 585 Oak Mountain Road, and they're looking to get a permit to exceed for a, uh, for a bull riding and live music on May 25th from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. You may be familiar with this, they've had a couple permits to exceeds out here before. Do rodeo stuff, they have live music. It's at, uh, Oak Mountain towards the end of this neighborhood on a, kind of an empty lot here. They have a little bit of agriculture going on. Uh, this is their submitted site plan. So they got a bull riding pen, a couple vendors for food and drinks, and then a parking area and a stage. You can kind of see it set up here, with the stage a little down here in the corner and the bull riding arena right there. Just more general shots of the site. This is the neighborhood that it joins here, this, uh... This road, yeah, right through here, this is Oak Mountain Road, it continues back into the property. So with the permit to exceed, there's 10 criteria to take a look at. So the first one is the timeline as to the application. Uh, we received this on April 29th, which was the cutoff date for today's meeting. Uh, the nature of the activity, this is a bull riding event with live music. Then previous experience with the applicant, this is the fourth time the applicant's come for a permit to exceed here. Uh, the last time, there's been some noise complaints before, but the last time we had a permit to exceed was in 2023. So it's been about a year and a half since their last one. Uh, one thing to note is that back in 2024 in September, there was a shooting at this property. At a event that was not, they didn't have a permit to exceed for that event, it was just a event that they were hosting. And so since then, the applicant has said that they're going to have two sheriff's deputies on duty for this coming event. It was something to, this is the first time they've come to the board since that happened. So the next one is the time of the event. This will be on Sunday, May 25th from 3:00 to 9:00. Other activities in the vicinity, there were none to our knowledge. The frequency of event, uh, they have events here every so often. Uh, but this permit to exceed would only apply to this event on May 25th. The cultural, social benefits, they're expecting about 150 people in attendance. The effect on adjoining property, this is kind of in the back of the residential area. They've had some, they've had some events out here before. The previous violations, uh, there haven't been any zoning violations on that property. And then adjoining property owners of the surrounding area have been notified within 72 hours of this meeting. Signs were posted on-site and letters were sent in the mail 10 days prior to the meeting. Uh, as far as comments, uh, the board can add any kind of conditions they want to this. They can limit the hours if they'd like to, or any other things they feel would be appropriate, uh, to mitigate the adverse impacts on the surrounding neighborhoods. And then if the permit's denied, doesn't necessarily mean that they can't have the event, but it would mean that they'd be subject to the noise ordinance. Procedurally, we're just looking to approve to the higher table the request. And if you have any questions, both me and the applicant are here today.
Uh, what year were the complaints received?
So, the complaints were prior to the first permit to exceed, which is what brought them to get permits to exceed, starting in '21. Or '22 was the first year we got permits to exceed from them. So it's been a while since we've been getting, since we've gotten noise complaints.
But they had a permit in '23 and no complaint?
Right.
They had an event in '24, was it the same type of event?
I'm not aware exactly what the type of event was, but I do know it took place at that venue.
Okay. I mean, just wondering if they did the same event, but just didn't get the permit. And is, is it the '24 event where there was gunfire?
Yeah, this was the, uh, I believe it was September '24. Uh, right now it's, uh, September 8th of '24 is when they had the gunfire. So that was a little less than a year since the last time they got a permit to exceed from this board.
This is a different place, isn't it, than the ones that they've been getting from?
It's the same location.
Off of Goodnight Road?
It's, uh, yeah, I do believe, uh, that Oak Mountain comes off of Goodnight.
I thought the other one was... Off of, um... Okay, I thought it was in a different place. All right, well, don't go far. Uh, the applicant, would you like to come up and add anything?
Yeah, so like, uh, Aaron was saying, uh, last time we did it, it was for a fundraiser for someone who had cancer. And unfortunately, you know, we never thought that a shooting would happen at this family-oriented event. So this new event we're doing is also a fundraiser for, it's for my brother's in-laws. He was diagnosed with, uh, stomach cancer, and he had, uh, surgery on April, and he had about 80% of his stomach removed, and then he's gone through chemo also. So this is kind of like a personal event towards my family and for, uh, their financial benefits. And, um, this time around, you know, we actually got security from some deputies from the Rowan County. So, and, you know, we're going to be a little more stricter on having security and staffing, because I mean, you just don't know nowadays with society how it is. I mean, all we can do is learn and adapt to new, uh, things that occur. Just like, you know, Saturday with the Sherewarr Festival. I mean, probably how like half the police department out there, yet, you know, that situation occurred with the two sheriff deputies or officers getting hurt. So it's kind of hard, you know, but we pretty much have to do the best we can to, you know, try to keep this situation from happening.
Hey Sheriff, I know that, uh, a lot of events, we have, uh, a ratio of attendees to, uh, officers that are hired. You, you know what that ratio is? Is two for 150 people enough? Okay. All right, uh, you okay with doing three?
Uh, I would have to call the, uh, deputy who's in charge or contact and see if he can get a third person. He said he gets the second person, but I would have to contact him.
Yeah, his boss is here.
Oh, well, I don't know how that all works, so, you know. Because I know, uh, in the past, we had contacted, uh, Rowan County, and they had denied us security directly from the department because of a situation happened at another venue down the road, which I think that's the venue y'all thinking about, off of Goodnight, towards, uh, the middle school. And they pretty much said, because of that occurring, we couldn't get security. But, you know, we kind of kept trying and trying until we found an officer who was willing to come out there to our event, so I'll have to again contact and see what he says about it.
Are you going to have it set up where you could do any kind of screening for people that are coming in?
Well, that's part of our plan too. Um, the parking has to do a lot with it. So as, I'm not sure if I can go back on this little setup. Go back to... As you can see here, we have the, uh, parking here, which we're going to make all the vehicles come, and everybody will have to get off and then come up through here on foot, which will have the officers here and will, uh, you know, be venting, making sure people aren't bringing weapons or anything. So we're going to try to keep the parking away from the event, so at least that would, you know, if anybody comes in with weapons or anything, they won't necessarily be able to get to them unless they come through here.
All right, so we'll have a, a public, public comment here in a second, but, uh, just to the record, you're fine if, um, well, it doesn't matter if you're fine or not. We're going to require three instead of two.
That's fine.
Fine, okay. All right, don't go anywhere, just hang out. Uh, we'll open the floor now for public comment. If there's anyone that's here that would like to speak on this, uh, this permit request. Anyone, anyone? Sheriff, Sheriff, come on up, babe.
Like your county representative said, there's really nothing keeping them from having the party, except the noise ordinance violation. Uh, them being willing to have three deputies, if something would happen, we would have to come anyway for free. Uh, so at least they are going to be providing security. And it also really gratins, helps our response to the citizens when we explain to them if there are noise issues, that this is, it's been, it's been properly permitted, and there are deputies on the site monitoring that. And plus the hours of operation are majority daylight over at nine o'clock. So, uh, we'll make sure our deputies hold them specifically to that. By, by denying it, it may be worse than granting it.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you, Sheriff. All right, any other comments? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And we have a motion to, uh, approve the permit to exceed PE 01-25 with the stipulations on the timeframe that have been set out, and also, uh, the agreement, there'll be three, uh, officers that'll be there for, uh, security.
Don't move.
All right, second? All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Uh, last question, do you ride a bull? What do you mean you're too big? Uh, this isn't goat riding, this is bull riding, aren't they big? No? All right.
Yeah, that's the only thing keeps me from riding too.
Yeah. Uh, well, uh, prayers to your family, and we hope it's a, a good, safe, um, event, okay? All right, thank you. Anna, welcome.
I'm just going to get this slideshow started here. I believe that's the next item. Budget.
Oh, it is, yeah. Oh, boy. Did we screen people? We got enough, one, two, three, two. Four, five, six.
Thank you. Commissioners, it's my honor and privilege to present the 2026, or fiscal year 2526 budget. It is balanced and prepared in accordance with the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. The original budget that we're currently in was approved at $238,819,248. This year, the requested budget from agencies and departments and the school systems combined was $288,217,811, which is approximately 20% increase over last year's, or $49,398,563 increase. The recommended budget is a 9.8% decrease from the two, from the current budget we're in, and it's recommended at $215,404,572,000, I mean, $572,000, which is a $23,414,676 decrease. For the revenues, the property tax, uh, remains the same at 58 cents. The tax collection rate remains the same at 98%.
Can I, can I say, um, when, when do we know typically what our collection rate is from year to year?
It's in the audit. We have to use the number that is provided in the annual audit.
We've done that. And so, do, do we know specifically what our collection rate for last fiscal, fiscal year was?
It was 98%.
The last audit was complete in FY '24, so it was 98% in that audit.
The, the projected, uh, tax base this year is $21,225 million, which is an increase of 5.4% compared to the current year tax base of $20,120, I mean, $20,125 million. This, this will provide, um, a $2304,000 property tax revenue increase. Sales tax, which makes up approximately 18% of our budget, is budgeted at 40%, I mean, 40 million, uh, this year for the general fund. Um, this is 4.7% less than the '24 actuals, and there's no increase in the sales tax revenue. So here's a chart. 2016 through 2024 are the actual numbers of, that we received in sales tax. 25, 2025 is what we projected in the current year we're in, and 2026 budget is what we're projecting for the upcoming year. Uh, the 2526 budget at 40 million. And this is really bad. This is the, the absolute worst projection that Rowan County has had in the last 10 years, with the exception of COVID, which you'll see up there. Fiscal year 2021, you'll see minus 9.5%. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, you'll see minus nine point five percent. We projected, it was wrong when we projected that year. We thought that, you know, the economy is going to stop. It was going to be really bad and it ended up that more things sold than we thought. So it ended up being a good year, but our projection was down. So this chart, the way I did this, you'll see for twenty-one and twenty-two, you don't see much of a move. That's because I combined the negative nine point five and the twenty-four point seven together and divided it. And that, that gets you on this point right here, which is what was about twelve percent increase. This is, you know, it's, it's no secret across the state that local governments are projecting a flat sales tax from flat to one to two percent. The state recommended that, that counties and municipalities consider one to two percent. However, that was before the tariff issue. But the reason this is bad is because year after year, we're able to project over the last ten years, with the exception of the anomaly in fiscal year twenty-one with COVID, a pretty decent sized increase. This year, not so much, which basically means that we have a whole lot less money to appropriate towards, you know, every increase in contracts, utilities, employee pay. Everything that it takes to make a county, you know, run on a day-to-day basis is going up. But we're projecting that our sales tax is going to remain flat. What's presented in this budget going forward, if the sales, if, you know, if we are correct in our projection and it's zero percent, next year will be a really bad year. And in order to keep moving forward the way we're currently, you know, providing service to the citizens and spending, the tax rate will have to be increased. Or additional employees will have to be eliminated from the budget. And as we get through this budget, you'll see that there's a recommendation to eliminate several positions in this budget. There are additional revenues in emergency services, planning, tax assessor, animal services, parks and rec, and the health department. These are your annual fee increases that are basically just, you know, built in with inflation and the cost of doing business. The fund balance used to balance this budget is ten million six hundred and four thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars. We currently have a hundred and fifty-four million two hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars in our fund balance. Or that was the fund balance as of June thirtieth. And approximately sixty-seven million five hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars is unassigned.
Could, so that was June thirtieth of twenty-four, what that number was. So could you talk a second about what requirements are? Other, so far, this is, this has the least amount of information on it. But actually, this is a really important slide. Because while our total fund balance was one fifty-four almost a year ago, sixty-seven million was categorized as unassigned. But we, we are required, I just don't recall the numbers now, but we're required by the state to keep reserves. And that reserve changed.
Yeah, the, people used to use the eight percent of your, like, kind of model that you don't want to do that. But we have, based on state statute, we have to have twenty million. That, that's the state stabilization by state statute number. Some other items that aren't quite as large as, like our inventories and stuff like that fall into some of these categories that they're non-spendable, they're not cash, right? So, and then, you know, the other buckets are things that are restricted. So projects that we already have in place, that money is already restricted to those projects. It doesn't mean that we couldn't stop the project and use the money for something else, but you have to have board action to do those kinds of things. And you've already committed to those projects. And then we have the committed portion, which is where we bring in funds for our public safety through sales tax. And we have a bucket in there for tax rebalance. So we have to keep, each year, we have to budget for that tax rebalance to happen in the future. And we keep, we keep track of that over time. And then there's the assigned bucket. So those are all money that we're tracking that they're for specific purposes, for specific departments, for those kinds of things. Those buckets all are kind of already spoken for and the sixty-seven is what's not been assigned to anything. Does that help? Okay.
And over the la- last ten years, on average, and this includes last year, which last year was kind of an outlier. But the average fund balance appropriation based on our budget has been six point nine percent. And this, the ten million six hundred and four thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars is four, four point seven four percent of our total budget, which is lower than we would normally use. Now, you adjusted the outlier, it's not going to be quite as high as the six point nine five, but it's still lower. The only time that we have budgeted this low of a percentage of the amount of fund balance to balance a budget was in two thousand twenty with COVID, the year we were uncertain. The next closest was, that was four point four percent in two thousand twenty-two, it was four point nine percent. But other than that, it's been well above those.
And why?
Well, this year, as we were getting near to the end of the budget, I, I wanted to use less than we normally have used because I'm uncertain about what's going to happen. I'm uncertain if the sales tax remains flat as we're projecting.
We're, we're hoping for zero percent.
We're hoping for zero percent.
We've never said that before.
And, and I hope I'm really wrong and that it's a lot more than that, but I just don't think that it will be. So this is, this is, on a percentage, percentage of the total general fund budget is the lowest that we've budgeted in ten years to balance the budget, with the exception of COVID. Expenditures. So there's not a whole lot of capital in this budget. Most of these are small items. There's sewer system upgrade at facilities, sixty-three thousand. The Odyssey install at the courthouse, that's required, that's forty thousand. Eight hundred ready, eight hundred is the type of radio, not eight hundred radios. The radios are five or six thousand a piece or more for transit. There's some grant money there that I think matches that purchase. Playground at Sloan Park, a hundred thousand. And that, that pretty much has to be done because the current park is in really bad shape. The election equipment upgrades, then some Havak stuff at D S S. And then the biggest item is two hundred and ten thousand, which that's Havak at telecom, at telecom. There's also, as we get into the debt service, there's four hundred and seven thousand dollars budgeted in debt service, which basically means debt service budget is our budget where we borrow money. And we account for how much that payment is going to be with interest and principal for that year. There's four hundred and seven thousand budgeted debt service to pay for a new train at Dan Nicholas Park. And that will finance the train for five years at approximately one point seven million dollars. Vehicles. It was funny when, you know, I'm not very good at PowerPoint. And when, you know, it's, it's advanced a lot since I was in college. And when I put this slide together, about a thousand vehicles popped up for me to put with the slide and I couldn't figure out how to quite do it. But anyway. So AI and PowerPoint knew this was too many vehicles. So there was a total request of ninety-nine new vehicles. And the, the estimated cost of that was seven million two hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. Here's what the budget recommends. And I will say that this is not enough vehicles. This year, there are several vehicles that need to be replaced that we're deferring. And that is largely so we can fund the employee progressive pay that I will get to, you know, in several slides. But we're deferring a lot of, of the vehicles in hopes that things will improve and we'll be able to purchase those next year. And this is another statement that, you know, if, we won't be able to keep going without buying the vehicles we need and providing the employee pay that we need to pay without raising taxes or eliminating positions. So emergency services, normally we try to buy a new ambulance every year and do some remounts. But this year, we're only doing one remount, so we're not purchasing ambulance this year. And that absolutely cannot be deferred another year. You've just got to have ambulances and they've got to be able to run. And when they're going, you know, like we were talking about earlier in today's meeting, when they're coming to help you, you don't want them to break down. And if they do, you don't want them to break down because the county manager didn't recommend buying them. So, you know, we'll, we'll have to do that next year. So automatically going into next year's budget is going to be an increase of five hundred thousand dollars just in emergency services for a new vehicle. Facilities, they have a dump truck that, as I understand it, should have been replaced ten years ago. What? No, this is the, no, no, this is not the dump truck. This is the, we're deferring that one. It needs to be replaced. Thanks. This is the sign truck that they've been requesting for years and years. And we have to put signs up on all state roads and what they call county roads, which are really state roads. And that, that truck also is in the same shape as the dump truck that we're not replacing. Transit is getting three new vehicles and those are kind of no brainers because the feds pay ninety percent of them. And the sheriff's office is getting fifteen vehicles, although they asked for, you know, fifty, fifty some. They probably, you know, need somewhere between fifteen and that number. You know, I don't think they need fifty-five, but I would have liked to have budgeted at least twenty vehicles for the sheriff's office in this budget.
So we'd like to give you fifteen vehicles and a really nice coin. Okay.
Aaron?
Yes, sir.
Oh, could you go back a slide and tell me?
Thought you were going to adjourn the meeting.
I've already had my turn. They didn't accept. You said, was it seven, seven point one million?
Seven point two.
Well, seven point two at this point. What's a hundred thousand? Divided by ninety-nine vehicles, the average cost of vehicles is around seventy thousand.
So some of those are, some of those requests, well, there was at least one new ambulance in there. They're five hundred thousand plus. There was, you know.
Then all, all the, all the police vehicles?
Yeah.
It's the vehicle and the outfit.
In your books, schedules.
And the up.
Upfit.
Yeah, yeah.
Ages and all that.
So it includes all the outfit for those vehicles too. But page forty-seven in your books is where the vehicle schedule and you can see the requests and what they were. But, yeah, it's the equipment that goes with these vehicles and stuff like that really does increase the, the cost of the vehicle.
And one of those is the dump truck, which is like eighty?
Yeah, so the dump truck was, yeah, eighty-two. And we didn't recommend it.
So positions, there were thirty-nine new positions requested at a, at a total cost of two million eight hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. There were twenty-five upgrades totaling three hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars requested. There are no new positions or upgrades in, in this recommended budget. So this budget recommends eliminating ten full-time vacant positions. And this will, will create seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And all that money theoretically will be used to pay for the employee pay increases in the sheriffs. Not the sheriff, but the public safety EMS, sheriff and animal control, their pay study. And the positions being eliminated, there's, there's different reasons behind different ones, but in large part, number one, they're vacant. And there are some departments, with the exception of EMS and sheriff, that, that are not recommended to be eliminated simply because that department doesn't have any vacant position. I will likely do a hiring freeze as soon as this new budget begins and start banking back positions for next year. Until we see how the sales tax is going to go and how, and how many fed cuts we get and how that affects our potential interest earning. But right now, you have one in the county manager's office that's being eliminated, one in facilities, one in tax collection, one in I T, one in health, three in D S S, one librarian, and one at Parks and Rec.
These are unfield positions.
Unfield vacant positions.
That we were cutting.
So this gets to the employee pay. This year, we, we had a pay study conducted for public safety employees. And this outlines all the changes or all the recommendations from the manager on how to implement this pay study. So some of the, some parts of the pay study are being implemented, some are not. For example, they, you know, the most layering one I can see right now, they recommended eliminating the stipend and rolling it into the pay. And that, I'm not doing that. I'm recommending that the twenty-six hundred dollar stipend remain as it currently is. But starting back to the top, effective July first, the following grade changes will take place. And what you see on the right of the presentation is a list of positions, their current grade and their recommended grade. And so if the budget's approved as presented, then the grades on the left where it says current P G will no longer be, and the ones where it say recommended will be the new grade. And that is the first change. The second change is when you move to your new grade, your pay, if you're not making what the new grade is, then your pay will be moved up to the minimum. The minimum amount you could move is zero because if you're already above the minimum or at the minimum, you're not going to be moved to the minimum. However, there's some folks that are going to be moving five percent. And that's the max that they're going to be moving, with the exception of one employee in one of the departments is nine point one two. There's one employee that is an outlier. So I'm not saying from minimum to zero, from minimum, from, from zero to nine, because really it's zero to five, with the exception of one employee that's kind of an outlier. So if you're, let's just take deputy. Their current grade is fourteen, they moved to fifteen. There's five percent pay difference between grade fourteen and fifteen. That new deputies, that deputy's new pay will at least be what the minimum is, okay? For some of the deputies and detention officers, their current pay is below that. The second change that will happen, and all these are stacked the way the budget ordinance has it. I mean, the ordinance and the message, so the grade change will take place first for financing H R. The next thing will be they'll be moved to the max. Then they'll get a five hundred dollar in-grade progression. And, you know, five hundred dollar in-grade for someone making fifty thousand is a larger percentage than somebody making a hundred thousand. So this is to kind of give those who are making the least amount a little bit more. So, this is to kind of give those who are making the least amount a little bit more. The next step is they'll get a 4% increase in-grade progression, and let me explain real quick what progression means. That means that they'll, the, the reason for this is to move them through the grade, and historically what we've done is cost of living increases, and when we do that, the minimum pay moves up. With this, the minimum pay is not going to move up. Now, it's going to move up for these positions, like a deputy's going to move up by 5%, but it's not going to move up by 9%, which would be the four, 4% plus the 5%. So, progression is to move people along in the grade. So, after the $500 in-grade progression, then they'll get, and the grade change, they'll get a 4% increase on top of their new grade and, and 500. So, it's not going to be a, you know, 5% plus 4, 9%, it'll be a little bit more than the 5, because the 4% increase will go into effect after, well, up to 5%, but after the $500 in-grade progression. Everybody got that? Okay, good. Everybody out there got that? Okay. Yeah. So, the next step is the public safety in-grade adjustment, and this will happen after the, it's all going to happen on July 1st, but for accounting purposes, it's going to happen in this order, so it will be compounded to a certain degree. So, the next adjustment is the public safety in-grade adjustment, which is going to be between 0 to 3% based on the length of service in the position as of June 30th, 2025. I'm going to skip to what that means. So, any employee which has below three years in the current position, their current position, there will be no adjustment. Anybody between three and four years in their current position will have a 1% adjustment. Anybody between five and eight years in their position will have a 2% adjustment, and anybody with nine years plus will get a 3% adjustment. On top of the, you know, grade change, the $500 progression, the 4% in-grade progression, it will all be added after that, and then the $2,600 stipend remains the same. And then the next thing is effective January, historically, we've been doing that in July, but we've moved it to January for several reasons, but at the next meeting, we'll have to bring the policy before you to adjust the policy. But effective January 1st, 2026, the longevity pay increase will be between 0 to 2. And basically, for those that aren't familiar with their longevity, the way that works is if you've been here less than one year, you get 0. If you've been here between 2 and 5, you get, yeah, 1 and 5, 365 days and 5, you get 0.5. And if you've been here between five days and, I mean, five years and one day and 10 years, you get 1%. And if you've been here between 10, 10 years and one day and 15 years, you get 1.5%. And if you've been here 15 years and one day, you get 2% if your, if, if your supervisor say you're eligible through the performance mechanism of that. So, to recap this, there'll be grade changes, then depending on your movement to the grade, anywhere from 0 to 5%, then a $500 in, in-grade progression, 4% grade progression on top of that, then anywhere from 0 to 3% increase after that, and then in January, between a 0 and 2% longevity. And the average longevity, I think, is like 0.81, 82%. Of course, nobody gets 81 or 82% because it's 0.51, 1.52, but that's on average what, what it gets, what we get. So, down there on the bottom on the right, human resources will be providing a worksheet to each employee if this is approved, showing the exact increase. However, you know, most folks, you know, the way this is worded, you could pretty much figure out where you're going to be if you know how long you've been in your position. But HR will be providing that if this budget is approved before July 1st to each public safety employee. Okay? For non-public safety employees, effective July 1st, there, the first thing is there's going to be a pay study recommended in the budget to study non, non-public safety employees for their grades. Then a $500 in-grade progression excluding the commissioners, county attorney, and county manager. We are not on the grade, so we can't progress through the grade. 4% in-grade progression excluding county commissioners, attorney, and manager, again, the last three are not on the grade, so they can't progress through the grade. Longevity, 0.0 to 2%, county attorney and a manager remain eligible, and commissioners are not eligible. Okay, this investment in our employees this year is 4 point, almost 4.5 million dollars. The 4% in-grade progression is $2,890,734. The $500 in-grade progression is $479. The longevity is $227,410. The market salary adjustment plan, which is the grade changes and the 0 to 3% for the sheriff EMS and animal control is $240,000, and telecommunications. The increased cost in health insurance this year is approximately 5% at $628,320, and the county has taken on all the increase except the small, you know, amount that we do every year. So, the total employee investment this fiscal year is $4,465,464. So, the state and local estimates, as we understand it, for ADM, which stands for average daily membership, for Rowan Salisbury Schools is minus 134 students, and for Conapolis City Schools is minus 32 students, and for charter schools is an increase of 532 students. This budget recommends a 3.5 increase in per pupil funding, and the new per pupil funding would be 4,000, I mean, I'm sorry, $2,411.3, and here's what that means for each individual bucket or schools. Because Conapolis and Rowan Salisbury are projected to decrease, as well as the charter schools are projected to increase by such a, you know, large increase, this is how this 3.5% increase will, will affect the schools. Rowan Salisbury Schools would receive $1,154,518, which would be a 2% increase to their operational budget, however, a 3.5% increase to their per pupil funding. The Conapolis City Schools, let me, I should say this too, this money doesn't just, we don't send a check to the charter schools, it all goes to the public schools, but we kind of are outlining in the budget, if things happen the way we're projecting, this is where the money will end up going. So, the school systems are going to get the money, they just have to give the money back to the charter schools.
And the, and the guessing on this comes from, the guessing, we're, we're using a standard, and the standard is?
Let me know.
Either one, go ahead.
Yeah, in the past...
I'll take a little break.
Okay. In the past, it's been based on estimates that the state had provided us for the average daily membership, but the state has changed their formula, and they're no longer providing those estimates, so we're using estimates that the school system's providing to calculate this number, where they think the students are going to be located and how much growth they're expecting.
And they have changed their estimates?
Yeah, they did change it since that number.
Since this numbers, they've changed them, but...
So, this is an estimate, this is what we budget on, but if their number in actuality is different, then...
In the past, we have not changed what we have provided to them. It's stayed what it is.
But we don't know for sure that the schools are going to give them $1,426,780. They may give them an adjusted amount based on what the average daily membership is.
Yeah, and, and they have a formula from the state that they have to use to calculate this charter school number that they're provided, but we try to break it down in our budget to show this is what we think will be going to charter schools based on their population.
And when, when we think about Rowan County Charter Schools, I mean, a few come to mind, but it's not just charter schools in Rowan County.
Correct.
The dollars follow the child.
Right.
And so, if they're going to Greystone, out of the county, or other...
Anywhere, yeah. If they're going to a charter school in the state of North Carolina, and they live in Rowan County, then the dollars follow the student, no matter what school, a different county, yes, that's correct.
And so, Conapolis would get $33,550, and then the charter schools would, you know, estimate it'll get $1,426,780, a 41% increase. So, kind of the purpose of this slide is, is to tell the board, you know, we said here on this slide that we're going to give the school, Rowan Salisbury Schools would get approximately $1,154,000. On this slide, we're saying that the county's going to give them an increase of $743,000. What that comes from is, in the past, we have included in the budget message, the operation, which is the first line, the capital, the second line, and then the debt service that we're paying for the school at that particular point in time. The debt service was overestimated last year by what, 300?
Yeah, if you add those three numbers together in '25, it was like $410,000. That debt service has changed between the two years, so that's where the difference is coming in. If you add that 410 to the 743, you're basically...
So, they're still going to get...
I think it was 410, I may be off.
They're, they're going to get their increase, but the amount we're giving to them in operations and capital is less because the debt service, the way that works is, you know, it's paid, it's paid on the debt. The money doesn't actually...
Go to the...
Go to the schools, so...
How does debt service change? I mean, the guys of us that have a mortgage, we know what the mortgage is going to be each year, how does debt service change on acquired, already acquired debt?
So, in some cases, the loan has rolled off, so we've paid it in full, so that we no longer have that payment. And then, and the way that ours are financed, a lot of times we do a flat principal, and the interest will vary from year to year. And then, on the 16 and the 55 million, those were estimates, we didn't know where they were going to actually land at the time because we hadn't financed them yet, and that actually came in with a better interest rate than we were expecting, so we had savings on that side of it. So, even though the amount of debt we're paying went up, what we were expecting to pay wasn't as high as we expected it to be.
And that kind of ties back to that question I had earlier. Yes, we have reserves. Benefit of that is the taxpayer...
It did help us with our interest rate.
Significant interest savings because of a higher bond rating. I, I know we have departments that, I mean, I, I think as a board, we look at spending choices as, you, you had a, you had a page on here about capital expenses, they were one time, and those we pull out of fund balance, right? But the fund ongoing, forever expenses with fund balance is not what...
It's not practical, right?
So, keep a good fund balance, keeps our, our bond rating up and results in a lot lower interest rates and in fact, interest payment savings.
And, and to that point, without our fund balance, the employee investment would not be what it is, because the interest earnings on that money is helping balance this budget.
What would, I don't know if you look at it or either, even keep up with it, but the average percentage on our loan probably is still pretty good because we haven't financed a lot in the last couple of years.
Yeah, I could look that up, but the last, you know, all of ours are below 4%, so, which is good.
Well, compared to the market today...
Exactly, exactly. Well, we'll, you know, this last one that we did, I want to say, was it around 3.5 to something like that? I think it was around 3.5, the school, the big school. I don't know if...
You're saying for Knott?
Yes.
You've got it tied in?
Yeah, it's already, it's done, yeah.
The next, next slide is the same principle as the last slide, that Conapolis City Schools, the amount going to them, not, the amount the county is paying out is a decrease, the amount they're getting in operating in current capital combined is a, is a small increase. And charter schools, we don't provide capital or debt service for the charter schools, so they're, they're, they'll be getting the full amount. This slide shows our current debt service, which basically is all the, you know, it's our, it's our car payment and our mortgage and our, you know, whatever else it is you're financing. This is our budget for that, and what we're adding is the, is, you see about two-thirds down, it says new Dan Nicholas Park train 2026 budget is $407,616. Other funds, so, you know, what I've been addressing thus far is one fund, and that's the general fund, our main fund, which is the fund most people are concerned about. The other funds that this budget recommends is the fire district fund. It is increasing by about 17%, and I'll address that at the very end of this, this slide, but it's, it's going up the largest dollar amount than any other fund. The emergency telephone system fund is decreasing. It's going from $1,155,818 to $827,950. The opioid settlement fund is decreasing by $259,680. The risk management fund is going up. That has to do with our premiums, and a couple of years ago, we increased it to the max with our liability payments, and also there's a lot of claims in there.
So, they know, risk management fund is, the county is like an individual or a business, we can be sued, and so...
Daily.
Daily.
It also includes our workers' comp.
For a lot. So, the mission last year, we opted to raise the amount of liability that the county is carrying before we get into self-insure.
Land, landfill fund, it's, it's kind of staying about the same. It's, it, you know, it, it operates on its own without any tax dollars. The airport fund is going down by $324,000 a year. The water fund is going down by $63,000. The DSS trust fund remains the same, bonds and forfeiture's the same. The ARPA fund, this is, this is the same money that we're using for the health department, but we have to keep it in this fund throughout the year as well as the interest. So, these are all the funds that are in your budget book along with the ordinances. The fire tax, and I know this is flurry and, and hard to read, but if you go to page 49 in your book, you'll, you'll find this, and this is the schedule for the fire departments. And fire departments require... And fire departments request, um, their budget annually, and they request their tax rate, which is separate from the county's tax rate. And we'll just take, um, Boston Hots, um, for example. If you see the, the first proposed tax rate for twen- two thousand twenty-five is point zero nine, which is nine cents. And the amount of revenue that would have produced, that produced, estimated produced is one million two hundred thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. You go over to twenty-six, you'll see eleven cents, which means they're asking for a three, no, a two cent tax increase. And that proposed levy would be one million five hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-two, which is a three hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred dollar increase for Boston Hot. So I won't go through all of them, but, um, you know, just as an example, um, that's how to read this chart. And overall, with all these, is about a seventeen percent increase. You go down to the very, very bottom of the page, um, kind of in the middle, you'll see on, on the left side, ten million seven hundred and seventy-eight, nine, ten. That's the current year's budget for all fire districts. And the new proposed budget, you'll see, um, not, not, to the right of the billion number, is twelve million six hundred and forty-six million six hundred and eighty-one dollars, which in total is a one million eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dot, one million eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollar increase estimated for all the fire departments. With that, um, I, this is the conclusion of the county manager's presentation of the bu- of the budget message in accordance with the local government fiscal control act. I'll be happy to answer any questions the board has. Also, I would, before I forget it, um, we asked that the board, um, set a public hearing on, I believe it is June second, um, at three P M. in this building in this room, um, to have a public hearing on the budget.
This fire tax, um, anytime a fire department is asking to raise their fire tax, they have to have a, a public meeting in their fire district, invite their local fire district citizens so that they can explain themselves. And so, um, we've gone to as many of those as we could go to. Some we're still talking to. This is, um, an interesting time in the volunteer fire department arena. You're, they're fighting COVID pricing, you know, a half a million dollar fire truck four or five years ago is one point two to one point five, one point six million dollars today. And you get nothing more than you got, um, four or five years ago. And the wait time to get that vehicle is between three to five years, mostly on the five year. There was a pretty robust used emergency vehicle market out there. Because full-time and volunteer fire departments were always setting capital dollars aside in, in order to replace vehicles that they knew from a scheduling standpoint would need to be removed from service. But because of a big firefighting vehicle going from five hundred to one point five million dollars, that used vehicle market has dried up. And so now, uh, the orders are going into the new vehicle market because there's no choice. They have to replace a vehicle, and that's placing supply and demand strains on, um, the new vehicle manufacturers and backing it up years and years and years. So they are in a real mess, whether it's Landis or China Grove or Salisbury or whether it's, uh, your local volunteer fire department that you're, uh, in their district. The other thing that continues to happen is the equipment that they have, whether it's their turnout gear, what they put on to go fight fires, continues to be heavily regulated, even ropes. And tires, you could have tires that, uh, look perfectly fine and have no tread wear on them, but state law says you have to replace tires, you have to replace ropes, even though there may not be anything wrong with them. And turnout gear is the same. I'm not one that can judge whether that's real or that's lobbying. I don't know, but those costs continue to increase. And that is difficult, especially on a volunteer fire department working on a seven, eight, nine cent per hundred, uh, fire district act. Then the other thing happening with some of these fire departments is, um, and this just is not avoidable to talk about, is, um, is re- recent annexation that is happening. And so some of these are in areas that are along the eighty-five corridor and which is a place that's pretty hot in the Charlotte region. So Rowan County has a lot of investment going there. And so, uh, these fire departments finally are seeing activity come to their area that will help pay for these things that are ever-increasing. But there are new, uh, annexation activities that are in place that are, um, no longer making those dollars available to the volunteer fire department. So what we see then is that the county residents are now beginning to bear a, a larger tax rate because, uh, tax revenues are not coming to some of these fire departments where growth is occurring. And so that's something that, uh, everyone is aware of. The county is talking with volunteer fire departments, uh, the municipalities are working with volunteer fire departments. And the real hope is, and there's, uh, there is hope, um, because there's conversations going on to figure out, how does everybody win in this case? How can, um, city services like water and sewer be provided, the new projects that otherwise might not come here? They didn't have, uh, uh, water and sewer. But how, how can we also include the volunteer fire departments in, uh, the benefits of this great opportunity of growth that we haven't seen in a generation? So in a nutshell, the question is, can we find a way where everybody wins? And that's what we're working on right now. And certainly, uh, whether you live in Salisbury or Cleveland or Rockwell, Granite Quarry, Landis, China Grove, Faith, you are all part of Rowan County. You are our constituents. And if you live outside of those municipalities, you are also our constituent. And we are here to advocate for the full-time, uh, fire departments in the municipalities. But we are also here, uh, to make sure that the folks in the, uh, that live in the county that aren't part of a municipality are also taken care of and not unfairly treated. So this is a big issue. And it, it's one, um, that a lot of people are working on and talking about and trying to figure out. A term that I like to use, people of good faith, people of goodwill, sitting down and trying to come to a resolution where everybody wins. And, uh, we, we've talked about this a lot, that, um, no growth in a community creates problems. Growth in a community creates problems. So seeing things happen in our community that haven't happened in a generation is presenting us with a new set, a new set of, um, questions and challenges that we have not been faced with before. None of us have the experience of how to deal with a lot of these. And so you asked us to put our heads together. Uh, it's why we have our chaplain here praying for wisdom, right? But it's, um, it's also bringing people of goodwill together, uh, to work on problems and fix problems that we have never been faced with before. And I'm confident that the folks that are at the table are people of goodwill and that we'll be able to, uh, to, to work out, um, some situations. But in the meantime, this chart looks, or this chart looks terrible. You've got some going, uh, you know, it's twenty-five percent increase in, uh, in fire tax. And so we're still talking with some of these departments so we can understand, uh, what is happening. And, and I'll add one other, that, again, there's a lot to talk about here. It's, uh, I've described it as just the worst position that volunteer fire departments can be in because if you are part of a civic club, you see the numbers in civic clubs dwindling. If you are part of a volunteer organization, in, in many cases, you see the volunteerism, the culture is changing. And we don't see as many volunteers, right Sheriff? Emergency services, I don't, Allen's still here? We, we see that. And so volunteer firemen and fire, uh, women are, uh, they make up a, a, a big part of that. And so not only are the cost of the trucks going up and electricity going up and the cost of the fuel going up and the turnout gear has to be replaced quicker than it used to be and ropes and tires and all of that, but their volunteer base from a cultural standpoint is, is reducing. And now they are forced, if they want to protect their community, and believe me, they do, they have to start hiring people, and that's an expense they've not had in the past. So if you look at some of the increases in these volunteer fire departments, it is a, um, a perfect storm for volunteer, uh, fire departments. And so we see the requests for increases that is evident in all of the things that I've just talked about. And so again, how do we come together, um, to share in the benefit of billions of dollars of new, uh, investment coming into our, into our community? How do we share that between municipalities and, and, uh, county volunteer fire departments? So it just needed to be said, if you're looking at this and saying, holy cow, you need to understand the context. This, this is not an easy issue right now. There you have it. So do we, uh, need to make a motion to add, uh, to schedule a public hearing for? Well, I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for our next meeting, which would be June second at three P M. Is that what you need? All right, we have a second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, uh, the next meeting would be June four, uh, sixteenth, correct? June sixteenth. And then we would vote on the final budget because by law, we're required to have that in place for July one. So that'll be the schedule. July, uh, June second, public hearing. June sixteenth, uh, we will officially vote on the budget, and then it'll, it'll go into effect, uh, July one.
And you can't, you can vote on it June second if you decide to.
And take vacation the next day?
Well, you just, you have, you can't vote, you have to give it ten days from the, the date of the presentation, um, when you receive it. Anytime.
Do we have to schedule the vote? If, um.
I don't think so.
So.
You officially could.
But if, if we decide that we're going to go ahead and vote on it June second, we could do that, and we don't necessarily need to schedule the vote. But I don't think that. We'll, we'll talk. Commissioners, uh, questions? Any other questions? I know we've spent a lot of time with the manager and finance individually, a lot of hours. And so, thank you guys.
Thank you.
You've been working on this since nineteen eighty-seven.
Feels like it. Put it in full screen? Okay. Perfect. All right, so we'll start with, um, the financial report for the, uh, annual cumulative expenditures for April. We're at twelve point nine million, which is an eight point six five percent increase over F Y twenty-four's, um, expenditures at this time. Cumulative revenues for April, we're at a hundred and eighty-six point six million, which is eleven point one million over F Y twenty-four and six point three four percent. Um, this is property taxes through March. So a hundred and twelve point three million collected. Um, this is current year property taxes, um, which is two point nine million over, um, F Y twenty-four and two point six six percent increase.
And that twenty twenty-four, that, that's comparing month, uh, year to date on all these years?
Correct, yes. The same point in time through March, yes. Sales tax, this is the cumulative sales tax report through January. Um, again, those lag behind. We, takes a while for us to get those numbers from the state. It's twenty-five point five million or one point two million or four point nine five percent over January of twenty-four.
That collection, do we do that on a local basis and send money to the state? Or do we wait for the state to send us what they?
The state sends us a report, um, each month.
But when do they send the money?
And the money, yeah, I mean, they send the, we get those receipts also each month. And then the monthly, um, sales tax. So the purple line, so it's right here. That's right kind of on top of the blue line, which was twenty twenty-three's line. So again, this is, um, this is looking at what we actually collected for the month of January. So that was three point two million, which was down from January in twenty-four, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, or four point nine percent. So, I mean, here again, this is where we're trying to be conservative with our projections for next year's budget on these numbers to make sure that we're not overstating what we're expecting to receive. We should be getting the reports for February soon. Um, I've heard that overall in the state, some of those may have been up. And some of that was because of people going out and buying before the tariffs went into effect. So I think overall, we're still expecting it to not be higher than twenty-four's actuals. But just, you know, I don't know at this time, right? They're still waiting, and we still have several more months to receive on sales tax for the, for the budget year. And then the investment report. So, um, we are. Our total portfolio. Our total portfolio is the 258. That's across all funds, so that's all the funds that Erin was talking about, any money that we have in our budget, that's across all those funds. So it's not just the general fund. So we have approximately 4.87% invested in treasury bills and notes and government agencies. We have 83.84% of our portfolio at the North Carolina Capital Management Trust, and 1.29% is in a money market. So, and then interest earned through March 31st, 2025 was 9.7 million total. And, so let's see, 2.2 of that was in the treasuries, and 7.4 of that is at the capital management trust and our regular checking account that we have. So our interest is still doing well, yeah.
And all of our monies is overseen by the state of North Carolina. This is not me taking $100,000 and going to Vegas and betting on red. But it's controlled by the state of North Carolina as to what we can put money into.
Correct, yes. And we actually have chosen to do the treasuries and notes because they're more secure, and the capital management trust does the same policy. We're not doing any commercial paper at this time because it's a little more risky. That's where we.
Is the return better?
It depends, it just depends on what's happening.
But it's not significantly better.
Not significantly better, no. The risk, the risk is a lot higher. Yeah, with, with what we're doing, yeah, we have very little risk. And keeping a large portion at the trust, it's liquid within a day, so that is also helpful, whereas if it's in the agencies and treasuries, we have to, you know, we would have to sell those to, to get that money back. Any questions?
Usually ask you red flags, but we've been talking red flags.
We've talked about red flags, yes. Yeah, and I mean, we're still watching the budget very closely to see where we're at and where we're going to come in at, so.
Now I'd like to move that we enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14331811A1 to consider approval of the minutes. Closed session held on May 5th, 2025 as described by 143318.10E in pursuant to General Statute 14331811A5 to consider lease negotiations. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, we've come out of closed session. We have no actionable items. We have a motion to close, closed session.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, sir.
All right, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a great day.